Well, I'll call the Monday, December 2nd, 2013 meeting of the Eugene Planning Commission to order. Today, we have on our docket, envision Eugene employment and industrial lands deliberations. But first, I wanted to, as is our custom, give opportunity for the public to comment. I see one member of the public, he's shaking his head no. So, we'll dispense with that today and move into the employment and industrial lands deliberations. And Terry, did you have a kind of starting, I see a PowerPoint, is that for a reference?
It's for reference. We don't have any new information, just if you would like to see some of the diagrams. There's a diagram that will probably be helpful when we talk about setbacks for outdoor storage, but you can just use them as we go along.
Okay. I think that sounds good. What I was thinking today, as far as the format, and I know I didn't get this out to you earlier, and I apologize for that, was to start through, as staff recommended, maybe the table that was sent out in our latest AIS, and make sure that we are, that's an accurate representation of what we talked about last time, before we dive into the others. I would like to take the others by topic, and I know I said we would go line by line in the code, but I'm thinking that those topics pretty well cover most of the issues. If they don't, let me know, because I'd like to make sure that we cover the issues that we have. But it seemed to me like what I was hearing from our last meeting, that those topics, as they're listed, pretty well cover what our concerns are, and I'm seeing maybe a no. So, I'll save some time for us to hit some of those other items then. And then, we do have a couple of items from commission at the end that we need to save some time for, too. So, with that, let's jump into the table. And does this accurately reflect what you remember our last discussion to be? Commissioner Duncan?
The only one, and I think we're in agreement, but I'm not sure, I was thinking staff was going to come back with some further discussion on the E2 siting criterion? When we talk about a rezone in sort of that process, it can occur, once it happens on the arterial, then it can just continue to step on back down whatever side street it is forever. And I kind of thought we were going to get a little more discussion from staff on their thoughts about what that might mean, or should we even be concerned about it, I guess?
Yeah, so when we talked about it, it was in regards to that area, West Tech Business Park, around West 11th. And I recall, what we were talking about was, the process for a zone change includes not only the siting criteria, but the other zone change approval criteria. And if the next one, next door, would like to apply the E2 zone, they'd have to meet all of the zone change criteria. And the other thing to know about that is that E2 provides for a lot more flexibility in uses when you're on an arterial, so additional retail, additional square footage.
Right. I'm in general support of it, but one of the criterion, I believe, was kind of that discussion of industrial use character of the neighborhood. And a lot of that, particularly the Willow Creek area, is a lot of just vacant parcels or underutilized parcels that may have a house on it, or so on. So, how would we characterize if we just, if someone decided, or staff decided to allow that to move, how would you do that if it's not truly industrial in nature, because it simply hasn't developed up as industrial in nature, even though it's sort of planned for that?
Right. So, the first criterion is not repeated in the table, but the first siting criterion is actually an existence of commercial and industrial uses in the area. So, we have that as the first bar.
Right.
So, this would change the zone to E2.
Well, it says that and...
And one of the other two.
Yeah.
Right.
I'm just asking again, it's, I don't necessarily, it's not that I'm opposed to this, I just am interested, from a decision standpoint, how would you do that if the area is generally just vacant?
Yeah, good point. I guess we'd look at the types of buildings that are there and try to...
Well, again, if the next two are 50-year-old houses sitting on five-acre tracts of industrial land, of I2 land, how do you say that's industrial?
Yeah.
And then, as an example, most everything to the east of that is all BLM wetlands, so that's not industrial character. And then, you've got an apartment complex stuck out by itself down there, so I don't know how you get to that decision.
I'm not sure you'd be able to make a case that it had that mix of commercial and industrial in the area. It seems like that exists more on the corridor where we're intending to apply the zone, but I think it's a good question.
It's a bit subjective. There's no, you say the area is characterized by that, you're right, it's just a matter of looking broadly. The A through C are listed criteria, the very first one in the write-up, of course, is...
We could all get into the microphones.
The criteria are actually listed on page...
Zach, did you put the microphone towards your face? Thank you.
The criteria are actually listed on page four of Attachment A. And within the introductory paragraph of the siting criteria, it notes that the designation has to be light, medium, industrial. And I think that's a major consideration also, so you have to be designated appropriately.
What's that?
Yeah, I'm not with you on the page.
Which package are you in?
I've got about five different packets of this.
I'm looking at the most recent package.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
We had this before.
So, it's PC Agenda, page 11.
Okay, thank you.
The red box, right?
The red box, right. That's the one I had questions on.
Well, and I think that's what I was getting at, is if, as an example, that parcel on the corner of Willow Creek and West 11th is rezoned to an E2, and an adjoining parcel wants to rezone further south, what criterion do we have? Because there's really nothing there. I mean, how, I guess it's how far-reaching is it? If you reach far enough, you find commercial and industrial.
Right.
But it's not, it's not in the immediate area, because there's nothing in the immediate area. There's some inner kind of developments in there, like the guy who's got the cargo boxes that he's using for many storages.
So, we could look at trying to define the geographic distance that we're willing to go away from the corridor, and that is one thought that we had when we were talking about various components of E2, was how far off the corridor should we allow retail? How far should we let the zone go? And we, for instance, we take it down Burdleson quite a ways.
Right. And in the way the E2 is intended to operate, I don't foresee a lot of retail, say, occurring on something like Willow Creek or something. But if I want to use the E2 to my benefit, how do I get that done from a staff standpoint, if we don't really have a way to decide in a more vacant area how that is done? And I guess I just ask that we sort of get there, because at some point, I think we're going to be asked that question probably sooner than later.
Yes.
Sure. So, it sounds like the real question is, how do we define area in that Criteria A?
Yeah.
And I think we can put something measurable on that. Okay, thanks.
Okay. Commissioner Mills?
Mine is probably a real groaner. It has to do with the table, second item, chips. Thank you. And, well, maybe, there we go.
Maybe the other one will pull over better.
And the table, second item, ballet dance, martial arts, under PC Direction, it says, "Agree but apply Note 6." I'm not sure what that means. What is Note 6? Like I said, you may be able to direct me to it, I couldn't.
I think Note 6 was in an existing building. It's at the end of the tables.
On page 18 of the attachment, you'll see that Note 6 is entitled, "Theaters, Live Entertainment," and currently, that note only applies to the live entertainment.
There it is. I looked through it here a couple of times and missed it. Thank you.
That was Commissioner Belcher, I believe,'s recommendation.
You're on the wrong book. We need to say 18 again, aren't we?
No, 18 is right at the top of the page.
It's right there. Thank you, Zach. That was, that answers my question. I just want to make sure I knew what that note referred to, and I didn't find it in my perusal.
And I've got myself in the queue, too, which tags on to that. I'm assuming none of these changes have actually been incorporated yet in there, because I noticed the footnote 6 isn't there yet, and it still says theaters, live entertainment, and that'll get changed to include ballet or whatever, should we go that way?
That's correct. If you all direct us that way, we'll make that change.
Any other concerns on the table, then?
I just, so, I brought something up before, and I didn't see an address. On boats and watercraft sales and service, we talked about that. It's still left out. I'm not, I mean, you can have a car sale, car dealership, you can't have a motor home dealership, you can have a used car lot, you can't have a jet ski lot, or motorcycles, I mean, a lot of motorcycle stores deal in watercrafts as well. I'm just, I asked why that was left off, and I haven't received any kind of answer back, or a good reason why that would be left off.
When you say...
On page 15, under Trade, boats and watercraft sales and service in E2. I mean, if you go to the page before that, where motor vehicles are, motor vehicle sales are permitted. So, I just, I still didn't know, I asked that before, and it never came back up, so I didn't know if this was...
No, I think, I think that was just an omission on our part.
Okay.
Any reason why we wouldn't?
I can't, I can't think of a reason.
And would we, would we add that use to the motor vehicle-related uses, or to the boat and watercraft?
It should stay in the trade, because that's consistent with how that use is categorized throughout the entire code. So, that would be consistency.
I mean, I just went through it, and it was just, I mean, some of the ones where there were blanks made sense, and that one just didn't make sense with all the other things that were allowed.
And it's the personal watercraft.
Yeah, or, I mean, even, I don't know why a regular motor dealer wouldn't be allowed.
Right. I think, I think it's just a typo.
Yeah, we can add that in.
So, do you need a motion on that, or does that...
Direction would be fine, if all the commissioners agree with that.
Are we in consensus on that? Thumbs up?
If we're in consensus, E2, we put a P there, is that what we're...
Yes. On E2, under Boat and Watercraft, put a P. Would that also have the footnote 2?
I don't think so.
If you go to the motor vehicle one, it's just P.
Is it just a P on motor vehicle?
Yes.
Okay. And motorcycle...
And motorcycle sales, service, rental is, is, so I think just P.
Okay. You would agree with that.
So, then, that cascades to why would bicycle require a 2?
Rental, sales, and service.
Where are the 2s again?
That's the special allowance for frontage on arterial. That's a square footage allowance.
I think we, to be consistent with how everything else is structured, I think it has to have the 2, just because that's the clear allowance that the retail's allowed along the arterials.
So, would you put 2 with auto, then, to match bikes? Or would you remove 2? I mean, what's difference about, different about bikes and motorcycles?
Sure.
Yeah, I mean, on boats, they put them outside a lot. Boats and cars are displayed outside.
Motorcycles are not?
No, motorcycles are during the day, usually. They roll them out and display.
But you can do the same with bicycles.
Yeah, they do the same with bicycles.
One of the differences about motor vehicle sales is that the code does have some additional landscaping requirements for motor vehicle sales, since they mostly tend to be outdoors. So, like, if you take, for example, the Hertz rental car, where they sell cars, you'll see that there's actually a pretty significant landscape buffer between that and the street that new car dealerships, or not new, old car dealerships, you wouldn't see that. So, they have...
What's an old car versus a new car? What does this mean?
Dealerships that have been around longer, like on Good Pasture Island, where you don't see that landscape buffer. That's why I highlighted the Hertz as being one that was developed after this code provision went in.
So...
So, they are treated differently in other parts of the code?
Would motorcycles fall under that different treatment for autos, or would they fall out of that? I'm just trying to make us consistent.
I understand.
Trying to know where to draw that line.
You're asking some good questions. I'm, I'm thinking on the spot, and not, trying to, trying to see if it makes sense and what the other implications...
You're going from small to large, as far as vehicle, and I think the issue's really where you draw that line, as far as...
If you have Clemens Marina, if you have Clemens Marina, they've got 20 jet boats out there. If you've got, you know, somebody selling C-Do's, it's a different aspect. They're still outside, probably.
I think to be consistent with the motor vehicle...
Either that, or they all go to P.
Are we going to have another bite of this apple? Maybe you can come back to it.
Yeah. Sorry, I don't want a can of worms.
Right, right. Then they're not limited in square footage.
And what, what is our overall timeline on this, this goes to council in...
Yeah, this is our last scheduled deliberation session. We're trying to just keep it moving and tie up your conversation on this.
But we can, we can certainly, you know, talk about this amongst ourselves, and make a recommendation that we send back out to, when we confirm all of the decisions that we make today.
Okay, that's a good idea. Okay, let's do that. Okay. Does that pretty much cover, then, the table?
Yeah.
Okay.
This table?
No, the table that was, the summary table from last time. So, with that, then, let's move to item 1, which is at the bottom of page 2 of the latest agenda, which is manufacturing uses and performance standards, which also relates to Attachment B, page 6, which was our previous one in the code. So, is that correct? So, where it says Attachment B, page 6, that would be from our last one in the actual code. I put some tabs on that to help me find them.
Is that the November 18th?
That was the November 18th, and that's in the table, 9.2450. And the first one is to allow more manufacturing in E1, specifically those such as food and beverage products, and apparel, clothing, and other finished project, products, and that are manufacturing, that are expected to generate less significant external impact. And staff's recommending that we choose one of two options, either to allow outright as a permitted use, or to allow them subject to limitations. And I think that's, if you look at the, the table there on page 6, would be the ones that are highlighted in red. Page 6 from the previous agenda, which is the old PC Agenda, page 107.
You're talking about the original page 6 versus...
I'm talking about the original code sections that we had.
But you're talking about the PC Agenda, page 107.
Correct.
The last one.
From last time.
From November 18th.
Yeah.
Got it now.
Okay. Commissioner Jaworski?
Yeah, I, I had a question. On food and beverage products under manufacturing, if someone wants to have a beer brewery that's primarily selling beer, is that considered manufacturing?
So, you'd have to be primarily manufacturing it.
What does that mean? I don't understand what that means.
That's the actual tanks and making...
Yeah, they have the tanks. So, what you have is like a Hop Valley or something like that with a restaurant. Okay, I have some problems with that, and I'll talk about it later. I have some problems because of the fact that in the E1, it's supposed to be industrial, and I'll talk about the number of sites, you say, that are left that could even be developed. And when you look at it, you look at the, I'll bring it in now, because it's general. See, we're getting specifics, but it's general. When you look at the Willackenzie area plan, it basically said that when you look at this map, and you see what we're talking about, and you see the red to the left, that's virtually commercial. Willackenzie area plan is that the uses in this commercial zone are intended to serve the day-to-day shopping and service needs of area residents and employees of the special light industrial area. Okay, that's in the plan. What I see in this flexibility here that's bothering me is, on the few number of sites that are left, they're so flexible that we're really creating almost a commercial area, especially when I get into the specifics under number 2, which we'll get to, which says they don't even have to be related to the business, they can be independent. And I don't want to, I don't favor creating, what I see is a commercial zone in a light industrial area, even if it's called E1. I can see flexibility, but not to the point that we're doing something totally different. And that's why I have a question on, you know, I mean, if you're manufacturing food, like a Campbell's producing food, that's great. If you're manufacturing beer, like Budweiser, this, or that, but just to put a beer restaurant thing in there, which I see them, and have a couple of tanks, is not what I see for that area, personally. And I don't think the residents do either, especially when they said that a lot of the needs would be served by that commercial area, and both of the others, which still have some vacancies. So, we're creating unwanted competition for things that we need that was designed in the original Willackenzie area plan to serve the needs of those employees. Just a comment.
And I guess I have a, do you want to respond?
Well, I just, I just want to say that I want, I'm interested to hear what the rest of the commissioners think about this, and to also keep in mind the other two campus industrial zones as you discuss this, because that, that's exactly what we're trying to get at with the note, is what is the right amount of retail? What are the right amount of complementary uses within primarily employment areas?
And I guess my question would be, do the performance standards listed there address some of those concerns? Because it talks about no external air emissions requiring a permit from an air quality public agency, all industrial activity completely enclosed within the building, limited to certain types of manufacturing, and each individual business limited to 10,000 square feet of floor area. And I think you were mentioning that Oakshire's in 6,600 square feet, Hop Valley's 25,000, and Burley's is 30,000. So, it would seem to me that if the 10,000 square feet of floor area was the limit, that somebody like Oakshire might be able to be there, but not Hop Valley or Burley's? Because their size would exceed that 10,000?
In terms of the manufacturing use, right. Because we're talking about the manufacturing allowances in E1, then the special use limitations are the next kind of group of things.
I guess that, that was my question.
10,000 square feet.
John.
That's okay. I have, I have Commissioner Duncan, then Commissioner Belcher, then...
That's Commissioner Jaworski.
I guess a couple of questions, because I'm not completely familiar with when we are, when an organization is required to have an air quality permit. Sure, you can tell me, but if I'm not mistaken, I think you're required to have that even for steam, aren't you? I mean, so, and I think...
And those standards will change over time.
And, and I have a little concern about that, yeah, because of that reason, and because of the admissions really cover a full gamut of things. So, again, if you have a brew house that's actually brewing beer, they exhaust steam, which requires a permit, so now they're not allowed to do that. So, I have a little trouble with that, when it's just such a blanket comment, or blanket requirement, because the city doesn't have control over what those elements are, and those elements can change. Secondly, on the 10,000 square foot, I think your examples, if I'm not mistaken, are actually expansions of their existing facilities, so it's not that they just moved to a bigger one. I think they actually expanded into those as additional spaces. Certainly Hop Valley has, and I think...
Hop Valley was a new...
Yeah, they just moved from...
There's still over in Gateway.
This is the one down.
I understand that, but this is saying that this is, this is a, this is an example of a manufacturing facility, but what I'm saying is, their manufacturing actually encompasses more square feet than just that one space.
Sure.
And the other thing is, if we want to keep larger sites, say, as a 10-acre site or a 5-acre site, I don't think we want to limit that to 10,000 square feet of manufacturing. I think we want to allow as much manufacturing in our industrial zones or our employment zones as somebody wants to build on that site. I mean, if somebody comes in and says, "I got 5 acres, and I want to build a three-story widget factory, and it's going to contain 100,000 feet," I'm going to go hallelujah. I don't want to say, "Oh, no, they only get 10,000 feet." I mean, to me, that limitation drives everything back to parcels that are under an acre in size. And I don't think that's what we're trying to do, because then we're trying to segment all these industrial uses, or all of our employment uses, into these little tiny spots again, where hopefully someday, we actually get companies in our community that can expand to much larger facilities and want to stay here. And part of it is, let's quit limiting what they can do. Let's allow them the flexibility for size when it comes to manufacturing. So, I'm strongly against any limitation on size of a manufacturing facility.
One is, I get in favor of just allowing outright as a permitted use.
I'm not sure that I do that either. I mean, to a certain extent, I have a problem with air admissions, because it's not controlled by the city, so it doesn't go through a process like this. It's some other agency that then we have to rely on. You know, all of it inside in E1, I can support that as long as that's done within reason. I mean, if I'm moving my material from one place to another, outside one door and into another, then I'm okay with that. And I don't think that would actually be considered part of the process. Certainly, again, you know me, I don't like these lists, so that if we keep talking about limiting certain types of manufacturings, then we start listing them again. I always have problems with our list, because as soon as we say that's a great list, tomorrow somebody comes up with a completely different one that's not on our list, and then we're back trying to figure out where it fits. And then, again, certainly, I'm not for the 10,000 feet. So, I mean, if, if my choices are 1 or 2, I'd lean to 1, but I wouldn't be completely happy with the way that's done either.
I have Commissioner Belcher next, then Commissioner Jaworski, then...
You can take that.
Okay. And then Mills, and then Jaworski.
Well, I think I share Commissioner Duncan's concern about the 10,000 square foot. When you look at Menkazi, for example, they've done great work and have expanded, frankly, to another site, but theoretically, they could be on, want to be on the same site. I don't think this is relevant, but I'll just mention that in the town I grew up in, there is a brewery that consists of a kit manufacturer who makes two kinds of beer and mixes the other two for a third. That's not really a brewery, but it might qualify under these requirements. But I suspect our pallets in Eugene are a little different, and that wouldn't happen. But my real concern is, it sounds like Chad Drive is starting to be different than the other two sites, and we may want to consider whether or not we want to treat it differently as a site as a whole. I hate to do that to you in the 11th hour, but I think Commissioner Jaworski's concerns about that area and its relative difference to the other two areas is significant.
Commissioner Mills?
I'll start with that last comment that Commissioner Belcher opened with. I, I share the concern about the flexibility that's being allowed, but I think it goes beyond the Dana Drive area. I think it, you know, we're going to do this, and the dynamic will repeat itself over time. It's just not at that time. These areas are not at the same point in time in their development. I think that the area that Commissioner Jaworski mentions is, is far closer, perhaps in some sense. So, I'm, I'm not sure I could support delineating specific, area-specific allowances there. I think you're going to have to make something you can live with across the city, or you're going to have to delineate them all. On air, I guess I just want to make the point that, yes, you take it out of the control of the city, you also must, we also all realize that air emissions are going to get more strict over time, not less strict. Things today that are not requiring permits will in the future, and I can think of restaurants as a prime example, although they'll be coming under increasing pressure. And a lot of other things that could be done here that would seem very harmless, and that we'd all say, "Yeah, sure," will involve some air emissions. So, I think you've just got to allow that. They're going to be subject to air permit requirements, and you can't say, this is too sweeping a statement, I cannot, I cannot support this statement as, as one of the conditions. The other one is, I, I think I brought this up before, this, you know, we started getting into list-making, as Commissioner Duncan has mentioned, and I'm, I'm sitting here thinking about, well, what about warehousing? What about, you know, we've talked about assembly and manufacturing, what about a wholesale distribution center? What about those kinds of operations where they're, where they are definitely commercial, they can be significant employers, and there's very limited emissions involved with them, but they need big buildings? So, I think you've got to be very careful about making restrictive lists like food and beverage, or classifying things. We're limited, we're sitting here limited by our own imaginations based upon our experience, which is doomed to recreate exception after exception after exception in the coming year. So, I'm, I'm not a big supporter of having a group, a category, a thing allowed, but other stuff not allowed by exclusion. So, I'll save the rest for later. I've got some other ones, but...
And I'm going to jump the queue, sorry, but it, it seems to me, just to respond to Commissioner Mills' comment, wholesale warehousing and distribution are all permitted uses in all four of those zones. And so, it would seem to me that could be the delineation between that and the actual between that and the actual manufacturing. And I understand the differences there, which I think, to me, addresses that where warehousing is permitted, but manufacturing either isn't or has restrictions on it. I guess that's, sorry for, sorry, John.
I apologize too, but I just want to make sure that everyone is on the same page, literally and figuratively, that we're talking about whether or not to apply a special use performance standards to a limited number of these manufacturing uses. That there are quite a few other ones that are already allowed, no restrictions. Okay. As long as that's clear. Thanks.
Because we're just talking about the apparel clothing and the food and beverage products in E1. Okay. Commissioner Jaworski?
Yeah, I just wanted to clarify, because I've had some problems trying to track some of these. First of all, let me just say that my only concern on beverage products under manufacturing was not the manufacturing. I'm sure the group would welcome a brewery there and they produce it and they have the trucks, they ship it out to wherever they want to. My concern is how that relates to where the retail comes in, sort of like the Hop Valley you see as an example at the Gateway. That's what I see in relationship to a lot of others. The second comment is what has already been said. When I was looking at page three, I had a little problem with allow the uses subject to limitations. I didn't quite understand what that meant. Then when I got down to it, I don't know why, but I wrote, as Commissioner Duncan had said, I wrote to the 10,000, the max is 30,000 square feet, but I can't remember where I got that. I got that from somewhere in here. And I don't know what that, that was referring to.
It was E2.
Okay.
That's the E2 retail allowance. Yeah, I know, there's a lot to track. We were also suggesting it in the paragraph underneath there that 10,000, you know, recognizing that that may not be enough. If you chose to limit these manufacturing uses, you could choose something like 30,000.
Well, in that vein, I would never want to see limiting a manufacturing facility, at least in the E1 that I'm familiar with, to 10,000 square feet. So I agree with Commissioner Duncan. And I, and I, you know, I thought, it gets confusing when you look at the percentages allowed for development and then you start to break that down. And it's greater than the square feet you're allowing here. And I got really confused on that.
Okay. I've, I've got Commissioner Baker, then Mills, then Duncan, then Belcher. And I think we're going to need to kind of come to some sort of consensus here.
Yeah, I was just, I was also going to kind of agree with Commissioner Jaworski. The concern is really not limiting the manufacturing in these zones. It's just the retail. And right now, we don't really do a very good job of sort of limiting that retail at all, you know, sort of, that might allow it to get out of hand. And I think the concern is we have commercial zones we really want to develop with retail. But this property is less expensive and therefore it may be more attractive for some businesses to purchase property there and develop some combination of warehousing and retail in these zones. So that's, that's the issue is you can, you know, we can, we can allow, loosen up the retail requirements in these zones enough that we basically have expanded our commercial zones because most businesses have some areas that they can dedicate to warehousing as part of their project. So that's, that's really, I think, the concern. And I just don't exactly know how we deal with that.
I, I agree with the other comments about no external air emissions, period. But I do think that there should be a concern here about, in, say, for example, in this campus industrial zone, you certainly wouldn't want, I think, we're not looking for businesses that, that may have air emissions that are of a toxic nature that.
They're not allowed.
They're not allowed.
As uses.
You can't have air emissions of a toxic nature. You could have, you could end up with something, sorry. You could end up with something that would have odor in it that the controls do not control.
Okay, well, that would.
The legal, the legal issues, the legal control requirements do not fully address odors in some cases.
Well, then that, that could be a concern, right?
Yeah, that's a concern.
Sorry. No, you were next in, in the queue, so.
Okay, I guess.
I'm going to go back and beat this dead horse a little bit more because I'm reading, allow more manufacturing E1, specifically those such as food beverages and apparel that are expected to generate less significant external impacts. To me, that's a very broad category that you're trying to narrow down to, to beverage and food and apparel. It says, you know, that generate less significant external impact. So, you know, we're trying to choose those things and say, these are less significant. And I'm, I'm just sitting here saying, I, I'm very leery of, of going down that path. The other one is, as I read these bulleted exceptions, the individual businesses limited to 10,000 square feet of floor area, not the commerce, not the commercial section, the individual businesses. Am I misreading that?
No. And, and this was lifted from our commercial code section.
Okay. So, you know, I've written here and I think everybody else has said way too small. But I guess I want to go back for a moment and see if I can pin staff down. I want to make sure I understand your intent. Is your intent, like we've talked about food and beverage, to avoid trying to put something like being considered up in Coburg into an E1?
What's being considered?
The applesauce, applesauce plant.
I love applesauce.
I do too. I do too. But it could just as well be apple juice.
Sure. No, our intent was in our original draft, we didn't include either of these as permitted. We got direction from you to allow more manufacturing in E1. And so we thought about it and we looked in the code and we found in our commercial section, we already allow a couple of additional manufacturing uses and those, that's where the list came from. I also want to note that food and beverage is a targeted industry for our regional economic development. So it's a particular momentum.
We've talked a lot about beverages, but there are a lot of beer and brewery, but there are a lot of other beverages in the world that might want to locate. I guess right now I'm landing on outright permit. I'm, I'm having a trouble with us being able to craft a set of exclusions.
Okay. Commissioner Duncan, then Belcher, then Borowski.
Yeah, I'm with Commissioner Mills on this. I think it's just allow outright as permitted use because I think what I'm hearing from most, if not all, the commissioners is really the concern that falls under more number two, is sort of how much retail and how much other uses can be in these zones. I think we all, at least I believe we all agree that we'd love to see a nice, large applesauce manufacturing facility land on Chad Street or whoever it might be, as long as it meets some of the other ones. So we have enough other citing requirements to take care of a lot of the concerns I think that spoke about, other than I think we could address some of these issues down in number two versus number one.
Okay. All right. I have Commissioner Belcher next. And then we're going to need to.
Yeah.
So. So I'll keep it generic and quick. It seems to me that the model that we're moving forward towards now for manufacturing of food things is doing it locally. And one of those major uses is beer. And beer, at least the microbreweries tend to want to be able to have a serving room at the same time. And they want the ability to expand. And we're also seeing fermentation going into foods as well. And we have the old beer stein now being a fermentation manufacturing site as well as a food site. So who knows how far that will go, sausages, et cetera. So I just support the idea of the outright use.
Commissioner Borowski?
I guess I'm leaning that way, although, you know, some of the, the examples here are all palatable. But, you know, it could be a beet processing plant next to the register guard building.
Or sriracha.
You know. And so, I mean, a Saniam, a Saniam canning plant, the emissions from San, are a little bit different. They're not toxic, but they may not be what you want next to your, next to your high-tech thing. So, you know, I mean, yeah, we're trying to think of it. So I would say either yes, permit it all out, or just pull it back out for campuses. I think there's other areas that it could be permitted.
We're, we're at least expressing where we're, where we're falling. So that's good. Commissioner Jaworski?
Yeah, I want to clarify what I started with the clarification question. And basically, I agree with everyone. I support the manufacturing there. I was just trying to relate it to the retail question, as Commissioner Duncan said, is more in the end. I could definitely support this if there are some changes on what's allowed as far as retail. I also feel there are some concerns on the type or variation of what kind of can go in, like you just said, you know, peppers and whatever, that maybe then instead of an outright permit it under these two, maybe we should have something that at least that gets a review and some chance to change that rather than saying it's just allowed and you can't stop it at all. That's my only comment.
Okay. And I, I put myself in the queue. I lean toward permitting it outright and addressing special use limitations if we need to under two. Because I think, I think we're trying to, trying to sew something up that I don't think we can sew up. Pardon me? Well, not, not in the timeframe that we have. But I, but I think, you know, again, I think Commissioner Duncan, who's either Commissioner Duncan or Commissioner Mills, mentioned that as, as soon as we make that list and we put that limitation or whatever there, then somebody's going to come along that has something slightly different. And, you know, I think there's, there's risk in this, yes. But I think, I think it's still a better way to go. So are we, I'm, I'm hearing a majority at least leaning toward permitting outright. That was what I was hearing. And so can I get a thumbs up or a thumbs down on outright? That's not up or down.
That's sideways.
Okay. Okay. So we've got five yes and two sideways.
And one down.
And one down, excuse me, one down. So, excuse me, four, four yes, one no, and two.
It depends.
It depends.
For clarification, it depends on the kind of commercial?
For me, it's not the area. It's how did you deal with sriracha and still allow fermented foods, for example?
Impacts of food manufacturing.
Yeah, yeah. And primarily odors.
That was my same thing. Because if it's permitted outright, it just goes. And I'm saying that if something like that came, there ought to be an opportunity to look at it. That's all. And that's why I said maybe under only that particular, you know, food and beverage category, there should be some criteria that says, you know, we can look at it, oh, it's great. Or we can look at it, wow, this should have a chance to get some reaction.
So maybe a site review with the.
But you're, okay.
That doesn't quite get at specific issues.
Quickly?
Yes, sure. It's an awfully subjective thing. I mean, some people would complain about being next to a coffee roaster. Some people would love to be there. I don't know how to deal with it.
Yeah.
That's, that's one of those emissions issues. I guess one very brief comment, and that is just a caution against, thinking of that place you've been by, that's been here for 20 years and operating and is an odor problem versus one that's going to go in brand new under new regs and isn't grandfathered anywhere. You know, it's going to be subject to far stricter environmental requirements than anything that's currently in operation. In many cases, the older they are, the more strict they're going to become. Certainly, we just have this sriracha controversy down in California, and I'm not suggesting that that couldn't pop up.
Commissioner Duncan?
I think from, remember that particularly in the Chad area, we're talking two or three sites. My belief is that the value of the land in that area will cause a much higher dense use than manufacturing of a variety of foods. If the choice is that, they're going to go up to the west end where they can buy the land for $2 a foot versus $15 to $20 a foot. So I don't think you're going to have high smelly manufacturing on Chad Street because the land's just too valuable.
So does that give staff direction on this one?
We're going to do our best to be succinct and summarize your.
Good luck on that.
Moving on to number two, language relate, regulating special use limitations. And there are three.
Four.
Four, excuse me, four there. And the first one is residential standards, increasing flexibility for citing a new residence, allowing it to be placed in front where an existing building precludes placement behind as suggested by public testimony. And I guess I'll, I'll ask, are there any concerns or problems with that? That seemed to me to be, Commissioner Jaworski?
Yeah. I think when the red was, was added, it created a, a problem in the E1 area. Basically, as some have said, there's only a few sites there that actually front the street. Other than, let's say, when the, when the, when the veterans clinic goes in, there's only like one, two, there's only three sites that really cite that. But although they could be broken up into more sites facing the street. But the issue that I have, I have a, a real problem in, in having a residential house facing the street on that particular type of development with some of the larger businesses there. And there you have a residential dwelling right across from, let's, you know, let's, let's say the Levi place or something. And I just don't see it in that, that particular area. I can see if it's behind it or something, but in there, I just don't see putting it in front. It makes absolutely no sense to me.
Commissioner Duncan?
Well, correct me, but the way I read this is that if it's new structure being built, it would have to be located behind if you had any intent. So once this goes into effect, if I build a building and then five years from now decide I want to add a residency, you've already missed that because it's after the code went into effect when you built your building. So you couldn't build in front. This is only existing as of the time the code goes into effect.
No, that, that's not correct.
Well, that's kind of how I was under the impression we had always talked about it.
And that's how I'd want to see it.
Okay.
I mean, I, my, my intent, when I suggested this, I think it was me that suggested it, was the idea that if you had a pre-existing facility now and you wanted to add a caretaker's facility, not truly a house, because I don't think somebody's going to build a house in front of an industrial use and want to live there other than somebody who wants to have a caretaker on site. And the intent was to allow that to occur. And if it's a new building, then it has to go either to the side or the back. New as of, when the code becomes effective, this would only be things that could be built that were pre-existing, the change in the code. That was my intent, although, at least I thought that's what.
That was the testimony, I believe.
Yeah, that was the testimony too.
So for existing buildings, the example was given for an I-2 warehouse that's on the back of the lot. Could you add the home in the front?
Over time, because of the way it's currently written, we, it would be existing development as of the time you were looking at that. So to capture the commissioner's intent, we would have to add as of the effective date of the ordinance.
One oh.
Yeah.
Which could, could be.
Just pointing out that if you really wanted it in front and you were building a new site, you just build your original and then you add it on.
Commissioner Borowski, do you still have, because I think, I think there seems to be general consensus, I'm seeing head nods, that this is acceptable if it's an existing industrial use that precedes the date of this ordinance?
Got it.
Okay. Retail allowance in E2 along transit corridors. Keep it 30,000 square feet.
Where are you now?
I'm on number two.
Oh, I thought you were going to go down one, two, three, four of that section that said number two.
No, we're on number.
Two, sub-two.
Two.
Page three of today's.
Page three of today's.
Actually corresponds.
Yeah. Okay, you went language regulating special. Oh, you're going by this.
Yeah, I'm going down this list first and hoping if there are other issues in the actual code list that we have time to get to those. So retail allowance in E2 along transit corridors or arterial roadways. Keep it 30,000 square feet. Says the majority of testimony indicates this allowance is a reasonable limit in the mixed-use employment zone. Okay. Commissioner Borowski, then Commissioner Duncan. Is yours a thumbs up?
Thumbs up.
Yeah.
This is just a question that came up earlier. How far back are we going?
That's later.
That is later. I mean, how far back from the commercial or from the arterial?
The arterial.
Is. So if you've got an E2, if you've got an E2 property that is very deep, can that 30,000 go, you know, a quarter mile back from the, the arterial?
It could. The way it's currently worded, they could place the retail anywhere on that site. But of course, you'd still have to have frontage.
And we don't have any lots that are that deep. The lots tend to be pretty shallow along West 11. Some of them go.
But our code would allow you to step back.
But why would. Criteria are met, yes.
The development standards do include, they mimic the commercial development standards, which require a portion of the building to be built within the front setback in order to be pedestrian-friendly and transit-supportive. So that is one small stick that would require that building to be closer to the street. And then that would put the. that building to be closer to the street. And then that would put the rest of the balance of the property into industrial use or some other use, not retail.
Commissioner Duncan?
I'm okay with the number. I have concerns if we truly get, if, when MX takes effect and we have a lot of old buildings out there and there's redevelopment start to occur, if somebody assembles a large tract or something like a Target disappears and we've got that big tract of land out there, 30,000 feet may be small for a real true mixed-use multi-type development out there. So to me, the 30,000 could be a limitation on large parcels. And hopefully, that's what we're going to see is more comprehensive sort of redevelopment out there versus these little piece-by-piece developments. And as you get out in some of that area, we've got some pieces that are fairly sizable that are under common ownership, even though they look like they're a whole lot of tax law. So I'm fine with 30,000 for most, but it just seems to me that it's that, again, that one-size-fits-all mentality that we always go back years later and scratch ourselves in the head and say, well, I wonder why we did that for a 10-acre parcel of land or whatever it might be.
I can address at least the existing building. If you'll look at the last sentence in Note 2, which in today's packet is on page 17, the last sentence there in Note 2 states that this shall apply only to new development. So your example of Target or any other existing building.
Well, I'm talking, let's say we redevelop a Target site. Somebody buys it, takes it down. And we saw that up in Janson Beach where they went in, took a lot of the big buildings down and redeveloped the whole area into other types. And that's my point is, you know, if we're truly looking at good redevelopment, is this some type of limitation?
Yeah.
And I, I mean, right now, I don't see it. But again, our codes tend to stand for decades till we get back to a lot of them. And I'm a believer that MX is going to have, is going to really make a huge change on what goes on out there. And if that really does occur.
Remember that we're leaving a good chunk of the corridor as C2 and that the existing Target Walmart and Fred Meyer Shopping Centers are C2. So they're where we're intending to have the commercial most intensity, most square footage of retail is on those C2 zone lands. It's something you have to balance, I know.
Okay. I have Commissioner Belcher, then Commissioner Borowski.
I don't know if this is a solution, but if there is a case, as Mr. Duncan suggests, could that lot be partitioned and then allow them to do what they want to do?
Yeah. They're owned by different entities. They're at 30,000 square feet per development site.
So I just have to create different LLCs to own it and then I'm okay? Seems like that's a phony way to get around it.
Well, that may be a plus or a minus. I don't know.
Commissioner Borowski?
I guess that might get to where I was going. I mean, I'm thinking that section between Bailey Hill and Bertelson along there where, I mean, a true mixed-use area would make a lot of sense, especially with an EMX stop right in there. There is a large chunk owned by one person or one entity, you know. So if you wanted to do a, you know, not a Walmart, but the other drugstore, the Walgreen Drugstore that takes 30,000 square feet, then you couldn't put any other commercial in there. Is that what you're saying?
That's correct. That's how it's currently crafted, although I think Commissioner Belcher just hit on some workarounds. The other thing to consider is that everything is still designated light, medium, industrial. So the focus of this zone, in some ways, needs to remain industrial or employment and not drift too far into the commercial realm. So that's just something we're balancing at this point in the E2.
And I'll throw myself in the mix, and then Commissioner Baker. I think, I think I'm fine with the 30,000 square feet as written. I think we can try and craft all the workarounds and all of that. But I think just for simplicity's sake, and I think just as the way I think it'll end up developing, I think I'm fine with that. So Commissioner Baker?
Yeah, I wanted to agree with our chair, too. I think 30,000 is fine. Again, you know, we have, we're not rezoning this to commercial. We want to rezone it commercial and there's no limits. We have some area out there we've set aside for commercial, we'd like for that to develop. And maybe we need to rethink about what area is commercial and what's not. In that case, we should do that. But if this is, if this is the zone that's designated for industrial, then we should not let it be a competitor because the prices might be lower to the commercial property nearby.
So can we get thumbs up, thumbs down on this one? We're almost at an hour and we're on item two. So want to keep us, are we okay with this one? Thumbs up or not? Okay? That looks unanimous. Okay. Retail directly related to primary employment use in E1, E2, I2, and I3?
Go ahead.
No, I'm sorry. Okay. Excuse me, will I take notes here? So, okay. Commissioner Jaworski?
I had a real problem with understanding this. Basically, if I understood the way you wrote it, commercial uses allow, under this standard, enterprise up to 50% of the total square footage of the lot. So if you have a two-acre site, that's not how it read? I said you could have a 40,000-square-foot retail, you know. I mean, I don't understand how that read because there was no limitations on, I couldn't understand the limitation on the size of the retail directly related to the business. Could you explain that?
It's intended to be 50% of the square footage of building space on the development site, and we could make that explicit.
Oh, that was very unclear to me. So it's up to 50% of the building site?
All the building square footage on the site, right.
So if they build, if they build 100, does that include per floors or just the ground floor?
All the square.
It would be all square footage.
Okay, so if they have a 200,000 or 300,000 square-foot building, they can build a 200, 200,000 square-foot retail?
Yes, directly related to what's on the site.
Okay, then I have a problem with that.
Yeah. Can I just also call your attention to the fact that we brought up another option under this one, and that was to scale it according to how big the manufacturing or employment use is. So last deliberations, we talked about the fact that we had originally recommended 30%, and then we increased it to 50% based on some testimony. And then you all talked about, well, is that too much, especially for big sites or big amounts of employment? So we put out there, one option could be to have two different standards depending on the size of the employment use. So if you have an employment use that's 30,000 or under, and we took that based on some examples, then you would be allowed the full 50% related to your use. If you have a bigger employment use, we would restrict it to 30%. And that's just trying to scale the small versus the large.
So when you look at what you're saying and anticipating what comes in, just so I have a sense, how big could this retail facility be?
On a 30,000 square foot one, it could be 9,000 square feet.
9,000, on a 30,000 square foot building. But some of the buildings that are there are multiple stories, so they're pretty big buildings. So, you know, assuming that there's, let's just say 100,000, how big would it be then?
30,000.
30,000?
Thirty, 30,000. Yeah, that's, to me, that's big block retail. And I know when I spoke in that general area, like to Arley and all the multiple acres, I don't know what they had at one time, 40, 50, 60-acre site, they were only allowed one building, which was that grocery store that could get 50,000. Everything else was limited to, like, well, well under 5,000. And I'm saying, here you're having this Chad site that's going to be going in that could have two or three, let's say, because there's not that many sites, two or three or four sites that have these almost blockbuster retail outlets.
But again, these are the ones that are related to the.
I understand if it's related, but it's still a retail outlet. Okay.
I've got myself in the queue, then Commissioner Belcher. And I think I lean toward the, another option, limiting it to the 50%, up to the 30,000 square feet, and then limiting it to 30%. Because the, up to 50% then would allow something like the Bagelsphere and some of those areas where we've got smaller buildings to start with. And, you know, I guess I've got some flexibility in my mind as far as the 30%, if that's really the hard and fast number or not. But I think once you get up to a certain square footage, I think we should have some limitation on that, just to keep it from becoming either a big box or just another commercial. Again, it's kind of creeping into the commercial area potentially if that, you know, I guess that's, that's some of my thoughts. Okay. Let me get the queue right. Commissioner Belcher?
Yeah, I'm envisioning a regional distribution center for REI or Walmart, take your pick. And 50% of it could be in the distribution center and 50% of it could be a big box store. Is that correct?
Well, I think you raise an interesting point, and it allows me to call your attention to page 15 of your Attachment A. And the use where this Note 3 is actually applied specifically calls out products that are quote manufactured, repaired, or assembled on the development site.
Thank you.
So again, as we attempted to call out in the AIS, Burley would not be able to sell also bicycles and reflective vests and helmets and.
Well, that's the next item we're going to talk about.
The next.
But nonetheless, because this is a distribution center, not a manufacturing site, there'd be limitations on the possibility of 50/50. Okay. Thank you.
Commissioner Mills?
I guess I'm trying to think of a way to perhaps address Commissioner Jaworski's concerns. I'm wondering if rather than a percentage, we had a maximum, maximum square footage for directly related retail. You know, we keep the percentage up to a maximum square footage. Because then you get how big of a lot and so on. But I guess I would, I'd put that out there for consideration. I think I could support that.
We actually do that in the other note. When it's an independent retail use, we limit it to 5,000 square feet. So it would be parallel.
So that would be, rather than percentage of the peak, the max would be a square footage and you could scale it on a percentage up to that.
I have Commissioner Duncan next, I believe.
Okay.
And then Commissioner Baker, did you have?
Yeah. I would be okay with Commissioner Mills's suggestion. I was actually thinking, as you brought up multi-story buildings and talking about a percent of the ground floor or first-floor space, so that if I had a four-story building that was 200,000 feet, I couldn't get the percent of 200,000. I could get the percent of ground floor, which is where retail actually occurs. You don't put retail on second, third, and fourth floors. But I think I like Commissioner Mills's idea better. Now, I don't know what those numbers are.
Okay. Commissioner Baker?
Yeah, I was going to suggest putting a maximum as well. So I definitely agree with Commissioner Mills's proposal or suggestion. I think that would at least, you can, you can decide what the number should be, but that way you can make sure that you don't end up essentially allowing a big-box retail.
And I was going to put myself in the queue because I was going to suggest something. And then you guys both, I think we're at a tie. I was going to suggest, what if we looked at increasing the limit to 50% retail for operations, up to a maximum 10,000 square feet of retail? And then just leave it at that. Then you don't need to get into the 30% or the overall size or any of that. You know, I guess the issue there might be if they have 200,000 square feet, they're still limited to 10,000 square feet. But it's still just what's actually manufactured there. And I'm not sure that, I'm not sure. I think that might be okay. So that's my proposal. And I think, I'll go Commissioner Mills, then Commissioner Duncan.
I was, you know, you did exactly what I feel needed to be done. Let's put a number out there and then let's figure out if that's the right number or not. 10 feels a little light to me on the high end. I'd probably be close, I could, I'll support the concept in general, but I'd suggest a little higher number.
Okay. Commissioner Duncan?
Maybe a question of staff a little bit. You used the example in here of Bike Friday. I was in their facility, it's been several years ago. But you can't tell where retail is and where manufacturing is when you're in that building because it depends on what they're manufacturing. You kind of go to that portion of the building to look at that item to purchase. How do you do that if manufacturing doesn't designate an area for retail if it's sort of just as wherever? That's why I'm looking at you because you're the answer on this one.
Well, interesting. I have not been to Bike Friday, and so I didn't know that. But generally speaking, buildings have an occupancy rating. So where you manufacture is different building code occupancy ratings than where you would have retail. Because in theory, manufacturing is where the workers are and the public really wouldn't be allowed. And I even, I don't even know if that's an OSHA issue as well, right? Because of the potential hazards for somebody walking into your manufacturing shop. So maybe they're an anomaly. Because for us in looking at building permits and tenant infills, they would designate the portion of the building that's manufacturing and the portion that's retail.
Okay. So that may just be an atypical situation.
I'm hopeful because that seems odd to me.
Well, it's, a lot of their manufacturing is.
One off.
Well, it's assemblies.
It's a custom bicycle.
Yeah, it's that kind of stuff. So, okay.
I'm with Commissioner Mills. I think, I still think the percentage needs to be in here with that limitation because I don't think that if I build, at least I think he's saying just a number versus a number percentage, I'm not sure that I'd like to see on, say, some of the smaller sites where someone could come in and use 75% of their building for retail because it was under that number. So.
I know my suggestion was 50% up to a maximum. I, throughout 10,000 square feet, I'm, I'm open to suggestions on that. But I think the 50% is a good.
It certainly.
Especially in the smaller realm. And if we put an upper cap on that with just a square footage limit, that seems to me like that would address it, whatever that upper cap might be. Are there suggestions on the upper cap? If 10,000 is too low?
30.
Okay. Is that?
Well, it certainly fits with other numbers we're using throughout the code.
That's true. Okay. And it does have to be directly related?
And it does have to be directly related in this situation.
In this situation, the one we're talking about here is directly.
It's actually cold. We're rinsing from the cold.
Okay.
We were trying, I was trying to think of examples that exist now, and the only thing I can think of is in the Chad Drive area where St. Vincent has their retail store, but that's not, and that's about eight or 9,000 square feet. That's not solely what's manufactured on site. It's not just their glass tiles or their mattresses. So it's, I don't know that we can really say what's appropriate at this point for the, to be, to be supportive. We had come to you initially with some very small square footages for the different supporting retail, but we haven't gone down this path yet.
Okay. Commissioner Baker?
I could go with that number. It does seem a little high, though, for, if you've got a manufacturing and literally half of your square footage is retail, it just seems, seems like more on the high side than what you'd expect. Again, like I said, because you can, you know, part of any manufacturing process, you're going to have some warehousing space. I mean, you're going to have to have storage for things. And so it just, that number seems a little on the high side to me. But again, that's just looking at it from a, you know.
Okay. I've got Commissioner Mills, then Commissioner Borowski. But I think what I'd, and what I think I'd like to do is maybe get a poll on what that square footage should be. And so.
I'd like to speak to it before the poll goes.
Pardon me?
I'd like to speak to it before the poll.
So I've got, well, I've got Commissioner Mills first. Did you want to?
I'm off. Thank you.
I'm offering 30 because I'm thinking of the larger-scale manufacturing that could, could take place in a larger facility. And they might have more need for showroom or whatever. And that, I'm thinking showroom as I think of this, as for the retail square footage. That's what I'm thinking of.
Okay. Commissioner Borowski?
And that's where I'm going to. You know, my wife works in a furniture manufacturer. The majority of it is manufacturing furniture. The majority of it is manufacturing furniture. But to display furniture takes square footage, you know. You've got, you got to set it up and look, make it look like a room. So, you know, there's other large-type things like that where, I mean, the majority of the thing, but you still need, could need a large area for display. So that's where, what you need to think of. It may not just be applesauce.
So I'm going to throw out, okay, Commissioner Jaworski? So, I'm gonna throw out, okay, Commissioner Jaworski?
Yeah, I, from what I've seen of those types of manufacturers, they're probably not gonna fit on these lots, just for an example. And I've been to auto shows, auto things where they show autos. They're not that big and they have four, five, six cars in there. I don't know what we're manufacturing in there that they're gonna have to have 50,000 different products that they need a large area to show it. I mean, most manufacturers probably don't manufacture more than three or four things, usually. And I'm somewhat confused here, you know, and then I, we can look at manufacturers that are big and look at the size of the lots, just for the ones that do cabinetry and stuff, and then they have a showroom. It's not that large. So I just don't know why it has to be this large if it's only showing their product. That's what I'm, my concern is.
We've had a suggestion of up to 50,000, excuse me, 50% of the square footage up to a maximum 30,000 square feet. And that's kind of what I'm hearing.
Or 10,000, you have?
Or 10,000. 10,000 or 30,000. So, let's do a thumbs up or thumbs down on the 30,000. Let's start there. And so we've got, so we've got five yes and two no. So, would anyone's vote change if we went to 10,000? I'm thinking that's kind of definitive that 30,000 is the recommendation.
Okay.
All right, thanks.
Number four.
Well, what about the percentage?
Oh. I thought that was part of-
50/30.
So the recommendation is, is five to two to recommend, limiting it to 50% retail for operations up to, via 30,000 square foot.
Of retail.
Of retail. If you have 60,000 square foot building, or larger, would be limited to 30,000. Okay. Number four. Sure.
Yeah, I'll speak to number four. And I don't know all the sizes of the properties in the I-2 zones, but in looking at the E-1 zone, and they're independent of what already exists there, or will be built, and then you can do it in front of it, I just, I just don't like this criteria at all for just having standalone retail independent. I seek supporting retail for that manufacturer makes sense. This is what we're trying to do. But just to have any kind of retail go in there, you know, I'm looking Oregon Community Credit Union, the big lot in front of it, what are you gonna do, put a retail store in front of there? I just don't see that along this E-1 area at all. So I, I don't support that in the E-1 zone and don't know enough about the lots and where they are in the I-2 zone. Just to get us started.
Okay. Commissioner Mills?
I guess I took this to be, you know, I said, especially, so this is retail, this could be food.
Yeah.
Anything like that. So I view this more as a standpoint as an employee who currently works in what will be E-1, and has nothing but open fields around him and a few more services and retail available in the area would be very welcome. And, you know, a lot of us will have to drive a long way to get to someplace to buy some lunch. So to me, this is what, this is, this is, this is the need that I see.
Can I respond?
Sure.
Yeah, I think I already mentioned earlier that if you look at the site in the E-1, within walking distances, there are all those places already existing for lunch.
I disagree. I disagree.
You disagree, okay?
You could say walking distance if it's a mile.
Just chat.
I don't think any of them are a mile.
Oh, I'll take you to my office.
No, no, I'm saying in the E-1 area. I didn't say in the E-
I'll take you to my office.
E-1 is not West 11, too.
There are three.
On West 11?
Yeah.
Okay, then I'll, oh, then specifically for the Chad area I'm talking, because there, you have all of that, because I've walked the whole area and we counted it for our, our walkable areas within 20 minutes. And, and yes, that exists in the Chad area, so I'd like to exclude that area from number four, is what I'm saying. Under that. You can have it in the other then.
I've got myself in the queue, and I think I'm supportive of the proposal, and limiting it to the 5,000 square feet in the I-2, I think makes sense. And I think the 20% in the campus employment also makes sense. I think that does provide, what Commissioner Mills was saying, the opportunity to have some services in those areas. And so I would be supportive of that. Other, is there general support, or, okay. So we have a thumbs up again, or, Commissioner Duncan?
I understand Commissioner Mills, and I, there's really three I-1 areas that we're talking about. And I understand Commissioner Jaworski's concern in the area near him in northeast Eugene, because there's a lot of services there. I'm not sure that a lot more services will go in that will compete. I'm gonna suggest there'll be other services that go in. The 5,000 square foot size is a fairly large facility. I certainly support not in excess of the 20% of the development site in campus. And I'm not sure, I wouldn't support that in I-2 for smaller sites, that we have a limitation on it. So you don't end up with 5,000 square feet in a 7,000 square foot industrial building somewhere out in west Eugene. But on the other side of it, so many of those buildings are so underutilized now, that if we got anything in them that put people to work in, I'd be really supportive of, because I go out in some of those old industrial buildings, and there's three people working in 10,000 square feet out there. And we're trying, that's part of what this zone is intended, is to get more folks working in these things. So I guess I'll support what staff is suggesting here overall, because I don't have a better solution at this point.
Commissioner Jaworski?
I just need a little bit of clarification. So, on the 20%,
Mic microphone?
On the 20%, it would be a maximum of 5,000 square foot total? Or, so if you, if they had 100,000 square foot building, could they have a 20,000 square foot of retail, or caps at five?
In the E-1, it's crafted that you would, you do the math, yeah, it would be 20,000 square feet in the E-1, with the exception of the specialty retail, which was a recent addition based on public testimony. It essentially addresses what Commissioner Mills had brought up previously, that in creating these lists, we want to make sure that we have that more flexible.
So I might, I might have an issue with that. I mean, I understand the issue of trying to get some services to the, to the areas, but if, in E-1, if you're putting 100,000 square foot building and 20,000 square feet of that can be retail, I don't know if that's the best use of that land.
Okay, Commissioner Mills?
I just will pose the question, you know, this is, we're kind of differentiating here between the I-2 and the E-1. Is that correct? We're talking about how in the I-2, it's limited to 5,000 square feet, and in the E-1, E-2?
E-1.
I-2. I'm gonna get this correct. In the, in the E-1, we're allowing up to 20%, which I think is trying to recognize it's more, somewhat more commercial nature, or, that's a question, I'm not, yeah, okay.
Given the direction you just gave us on note three, where you capped it at 50% and then up to 30,000 square feet for related retail, we could do something here where it's up to 20%, but then capped at a certain square footage as well. Yep?
I like that. I like, I like that. I was actually thinking about that to have some consistency between the two.
Try to address Commissioner Jaworski's concerns.
Well, because the feeling I'm getting is that you're less favorably inclined to allow independent retail than you are to allow uses that are directly selling things that are made on site. So that's why I was thinking it would be smaller.
And I'll just throw, I was just gonna throw out, just for discussion, what if we did 20% up to 10,000 square feet? Or some other square footage, but again, keeping it consistent with what we did on the related retail, if it's unrelated, and if we're less favorably disposed to unrelated, having a smaller percentage and a smaller total square footage. So I'll just throw that out. Commissioner Baker, well, Commissioner Mills, did you want to, Jeff, did you want to respond to that?
No, let's, let Commissioner Baker go, please.
Okay. Commissioner Baker?
No, I think the 10,000 square foot is reasonable, because what we have actually is you can have retail related to the business, and then you can have independent retail. So, you know, we're looking at, we've got 30,000 allowed for one category, 10,000 for another, you know, you know, that's, and in the way it works is 50%. So, you know, you might end up getting 60% of the, well, actually, what's the percentage on the first one, 20%? You might end up getting 65% of the building is retail, so. So that, the 10,000 square foot number seems to be reasonable to me as a way of compromise.
And just, just a question before Commissioner Belcher goes, are these additive? Could you have a related and an unrelated in the same? Okay, just to clarify. Commissioner Belcher?
Well, I like the idea of 20%. If these indeed are ancillary uses that are supposed to serve the folks nearby, it seems that the 5,000 square foot would be more logical than the 10. But that's, I can live with either. I just prefer five.
Commissioner Jaworski?
And I guess when I was saying I was not sure if I was comfortable with the, you know, the 20%, and then going to 10,000, I mean, again, we're trying to put a block in and figure every, every site out. You know, if you've got a 250,000 square foot building, and all those people that are gonna be there, they're gonna need services, right? Well, can those services be provided in 5,000 square feet? Well, you can put one restaurant in 5,000 square foot, you know. In 10,000 square feet, you can put a restaurant and a, maybe a small convenience store or something, you know. So it all depends on the, you know, how big and how many people that you're trying to serve. You know, I don't want to see 20,000 square feet added, of retail added to a manufacturer that has 20 employees, you know, on 100,000 square feet. But if that 100,000 square feet is employing 300 people, I can see that they might need 20,000 feet of services. So it's really hard to pin it down.
Yes, it is. One, one note, just for your considerations, that currently we're proposing 20% of the total square footage. The current regulation in campus industrial, what will become campus employment, is 15%. So in introducing any sort of square footage limitation, that would be more restrictive potentially. So just something to consider.
Yeah, just as a comment to what Commissioner Jaworski said, we just went through a process where we talked with every business in our, in our area, and I personally went out and met with every business and talked with all their employees, and we did a survey. Of those, some of them had 20, 30 employees, actually. Their number one comment was, when they supported other issues, I won't get into that, but the essence of it is, is they wanted a place to go to get out of the building, where they could walk for lunch and do other things, not stay in the building-
I agree.
-and do those things. So I don't feel it's needed, and that's why I said in our particular area, I don't think it's needed at all. But that was just a comment.
Commissioner Mills?
Your qualification, Commissioner Jaworski, to me is key. It says in your particular area. You know, in the areas that I work in, my particular area, there is nothing in the building, and people have to get in their cars and drive the distance, go through drive-throughs, or get out and park and take up parking space to get a lunch, and then come back to work. And we all, you know, have the same urge, let's get out, let's take a break, kind of thing. And for us to do that now, there's nowhere to walk.
I understand.
And so, you know, you know, envisioning what the future is here, you know, I see this same area with some supporting businesses in the area where we can walk down to the sandwich shop in the next block and get a sandwich, and that's, that's not possible right now. So that's why I'm very much in support of that in general. I guess that's enough.
Yeah, I just don't think that sometimes when we apply this, it's a blanket for all areas. If we're truly a planning commission, we should utilize some of our knowledge to get more specific when we can, while it's the opportunity to do that. That's all I'm trying to do, is to say in the, in the E-1 Chad area, that was not as relevant as it may be where you are, Commissioner Mills.
Commissioner Baker?
Well, one way to deal with this would just be, you know, to, to set, set this item four to be all of the areas except the Chad area, and then that removes it, I mean, he's mentioned, Commissioner Jaworski's mentioned from their refinement plan, it has specific language about this area. That seems like a simple enough change to accommodate the refinement plan and the information that Commissioner Jaworski's discussed.
Terry?
That would roll back the current allowances of the I-1 zone, which I'm reminded is 15% right now with no square footage cap, which hasn't been discussed in the testimony. We've received a lot of testimony on this item. Just a reminder.
So, so what you're saying is if we do 20%, let's say, in a 5,000 square foot cap, as an example, and we exclude Chad, then Chad would revert to the 15% with no limit?
I think we would have to write it in there.
Yeah.
Okay. Well, guys, we need to come to a decision. Commissioner Baker?
Well, do we have the same issue that we didn't propose this beforehand for public hearing?
We have another public hearing.
Oh, City Council.
Yeah. So is there a suggestion?
Well, in that case, that would cover any issues that we have and discuss. So we could propose whatever we wanted, right?
Yeah.
Okay. Commissioner Belcher?
My suggestion is you split the vote between the percentage and the max.
Okay.
Split the vote between the percentage and the max.
Okay. So, I was hearing, well, 20% is what's recommended. Are we comfortable with the 20%? Thumbs up or not? Okay. So, we've got one no, and was that, I can't see, yes. Okay. So we're, we're six to one on the 20%. How about the square footage cap?
Five thousand square feet. And that's only in the I-2?
Only in the I-2.
Just, we just did 20%.
That's actually I-2 on an arterial.
Oh, yeah.
So why wouldn't it be E-1?
Where, I didn't see where you see I-2 on an arterial.
Note four, subsection B.
Yep.
In the actual code.
It's down, the last sentence, two on page four.
Okay.
All right.
So 5,000 square foot limit for I-2 in, on an arterial?
And to be, to take it one step further, we're basically passing on any max on the E-1 beyond the 20% allowance?
Yes.
Unless somebody wants to remove that.
Yeah, unless there's-
Well, I move, it has to go here in anyways, because we didn't discuss this before. So I just move, we change the Chad Drive requirement and remove the, we still, we're, we still allow the associated retail. Just the independent retail, we just-
So are you suggesting, then, that we have it 20% in E-1, except Chad Drive stays 15%?
Well, I was gonna say that we just remove Chad Drive from-
Any retail?
Well, yeah, from any of the independent retail, because it basically is what-
So not allow any independent retail?
Yeah, based upon the refinement plan.
I'll talk to that.
Okay. Commissioner Jaworski?
I would feel uncomfortable doing that, because we didn't have any sort of, that wasn't put in there, and there wasn't ability for testimony. I mean, I see somebody in the back of the room that I think would, definitely would give testimony to that if that were, had been presented to the code, so.
I'd just like to comment, when I read this, I see a lot different than when the public hearing went out. So I think there's already been significant changes, Commissioner Jaworski. I, none of them have seen what we're talking about now.
I think that, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think the difference is, we've been trying to add more flexibility and allowances to the existing zones, and this would actually be, be reducing that in this, in this case. So, doesn't mean you can't recommend it.
But it's not an existing zone anymore. You changed it to E-1, so I can't understand why the old stuff would even still stand, because you're adding more flexibility and you're being told that maybe they don't want- and, and you're being told that maybe they don't want that particular flexibility, that should just be written and supersede what it, what was before, because it's a new code.
I've got myself in the queue, then Commissioner Baker. I'm, I'm comfortable leaving it at 20 percent. I'm not comfortable pulling out Chad drive, because I think to keep consistency throughout the city and our zones, short of special area plans or something like that, I, I'm just a little uncomfortable trying to fine tune that, you know, it's E-1 here, but if you're across the street, it's this, and if you're down the street, it's something else. So, I have Commissioner Baker, and then Commissioner Duncan, and then Commissioner Mills, and then we're going to keep it moving, guys.
Yeah, I was going to remove my motion and just make it that we'd add, we'd add Chad drive to the change that we're making. Change it from 15 to 20 percent with a max.
Okay, so Chad drive would, would be a 20 percent with a maximum square footage. Do you have a recommendation?
Well, the same as we used before.
Yeah.
Oh.
5,000.
5,000?
Yeah.
Isn't that kind of what we all just voted on previously? That was the I-2.
Now, we're on E-1.
That was I-2. So, E-1. So, Commissioner Duncan, are we-
I'm fine with where we're at, a different issue that deals with this.
Okay. Commissioner Mills.
I was just going to say that I supported it in the position that you had taken.
That I supported the position and the description you provided, Commissioner Randall, Chairman Randall.
And that position was not, not- Just to clarify.
I was the 20 percent on E-1.
Yes, and straight across the board.
Across the board.
Okay.
Correct.
Okay. Are we ready, this thumbs up or thumbs down, this one? Okay.
I don't know what you'll offer.
Okay. So, Commissioner Baker, you were saying 20, 20 percent, and then limiting the square footage in Chad to the 5,000 square feet?
Right.
Or E-1 in general?
Well, I think E-1 in Chad.
E-1, which is what's proposed.
Yeah.
E-1.
Okay.
E-1 total?
No, E-1 just in Chad, 20 percent with a 5,000 square foot limit cap, just in the Chad drive area.
So, will we have a separate vote for E-1 everywhere?
We already did.
Well, yeah, we had it for I-2.
We did the 20 percent, we did a thumbs up for E-1.
Yeah.
Okay, but not a limit of 5,000, which I misunderstood. I'd like to see 5,000 in E-1 as well, but whatever.
Okay.
Okay, so we're voting for the Chad drive 5,000-
For the Chad drive 5,000 square foot cap, 20 percent up to 5,000 square feet. All those in favor, thumbs up. For those opposed, thumbs down. So, fails three to four. Commissioner Jaworski.
Yeah, since this is over with, I'd like the record to show that, that this is potentially in conflict with the Willackenzi Area Plan Policy 2, page 64, and Proposed Actions, which I know the council didn't adopt, because at that time, they re-designated the industrial area to that commercial area, so it could serve the balance of the industrial area. And now, what this action is doing is, is re-designating that through E-1 and making more commercial. So, I just want that for the record. Thank you.
Front yard setbacks. Okay. Commissioner Duncan, we're at 104-
I know.
And we're on, hopefully starting on three.
Quickly, without discussion, I would like staff to, for the council, talk about the aggregate that can occur for, for uses related to manufacturing and independent uses, what can actually happen, because-
Run the numbers for the whole, for each area.
To clarify that they can be additive.
They understand it, because I don't think that the piggyback approach is what I would propose. It's got to be limited total somehow.
Okay.
Thanks.
Okay.
What, what your maximum could be on a particular building.
15 and 20, that's 70.
Front yard setbacks. Yes, Commissioner Baker.
You know, before we just finish, do you want to propose some maximum for the total percentage or something like?
No, because I don't have the information available to understand how all the arithmetic goes together at this point. I mean, I can kind of get it up here, but when you talk about a percent of something and a percent of something else, they're not necessarily additive.
Well, in this case, 15 and 20, right?
I don't think that's how-
Yeah, it is, up to, up to a certain area, it's 15 and 20. So, it's maximum of 70 percent retail. That's pretty clear. Says-
Say that again?
Well, it's a maximum of 70. Yeah, it's 15 and 20, up to a certain, up to a certain area, above that area, then it drops off. But up to that area that we specified, it's 15 and 20. So, it's up to 70. If you pick that, that, that point, anything below there, it could be 70 percent. So, so in that area is 30,000, well, what is it, 30,000 square feet and-
Yep, that's the max.
And that's 50 and, and 5,000. So, any building up, any project up to 60,000, you could have 70 percent retail. So, if-
But 50 percent of that would have to be related to the manufacturer.
Well, but then 20 percent could be other. I, I think, I think my intent would be that it would be a maximum of either one, not cumulative.
And I think you could take the 20 percent of the total-
That's the way it's-
That's the way it's written.
That's the way it's written.
Yeah. So, I mean, mine would be is if you got-
Set a maximum of 50 percent.
Well, it would be a maximum.
Either or up to a maximum.
I mean, if I could have 50 percent of related, could I take 30 percent related and 20 percent unrelated?
Why not?
I think you could.
Somehow count that 20 percent as part of the 50 percent.
Yeah, I mean, I think, if you're saying is related, you only get, you get up to 50 percent, to me, that's got to be at least the maximum that you could have, or, or at most, that's the maximum you could have.
Of all of it combined.
You can't, you can't add them together, yeah.
Yeah.
You, you get limited somehow. I mean, that's my, I don't know that. I mean, that's what I'm saying. That's why I asked for them to bring that to the council, so somebody can think about that a little bit more, or at least get input from the public on these kinds of elements, because that's one that we really haven't dealt with until one minute ago.
Well, it's easy to do. All we have to do is, I move that we adopt this requirement that the maximum retail from related and related never be more than 50 percent, and they, they'll, they can write it up.
Okay. Is there a second to that?
Second, you've got staff.
Okay. Staff, yes?
Could I, Zach and I were just discussing, if you look in your packet on page-
Which packet, today's packet?
Okay.
Page 17 of today's packet.
17 of today's packet, thank you, Zach. Under that special exception 3, it has in the last sentence, "The primary employment and industrial use must comprise no less than 50 percent of the total square footage." And you can see that 70 was crossed out, because Commissioner Baker was right, it would have totaled 70. And we caught that, which is why we then reduced it to 50.
So, it's in there?
So, it's in there.
It's in there.
So, we already have that return address.
Yes, thank you for capturing that.
Okay.
So, we can just make a note that we were in favor of that limitation.
Great.
Okay. Front yard setbacks, E-2, Commissioner Duncan.
Okay. And I'm talking along our transit corridors. I still have a problem that we have a minimum of five feet, because if you tell me I can build my building between five feet and 25 feet as a setback, and I find no productive area for that difference between the two, the five and the 25, I might decide that I want to have a 10-foot landscaped area, and so I put that in there. 25 feet's not wide enough, I don't believe, to have parking.
Can't have parking in front of the building.
That's my point. So, now you're telling me, well, you could put it back 25 feet if you want, but why would I put it back 25 feet? There's no reason to do that. I put it back 10 feet, and it still creates the same problem with MX, is we are building buildings that are 50 to 100-year buildings, and it never allows us to expand that right away. So, I think the minimum setback has to be such that it forces the redevelopment to be back far enough, so that we keep that MX line or that land ultimately available for expansion for transit. And, and so my point is, if you're going to make me push it back, or say I get a choice between five and 25, then you got to allow me to have some interim use in the front. Maybe it's parking, as we did for I-1, or E-1, that allows me to at least use that land productively until such time as we want to gather that land for MX expansion, or transit expansion. If you tell me that I only have to put it back five feet, and I say, gee, a 10-foot pedestrian area in front of my building's great, you haven't given MX enough or transit enough to gain it, and so we create the same problem that we've had all along, is we're still building stuff in the areas we need right away.
If I can jump in here, on page 18, circled in the red box, the minimum and maximum setbacks are broken out by arterial roadway and by all other streets.
Right.
So, the arterial street proposal is 15 to 25. That initially, or I guess I, in our version two, this is now version three, version two proposed 10 to 15, and we have since done a analysis of what LTD is proposing throughout the corridor, where E-2 would be applied, so between Bailey Hill and out to Commerce Street. And the 15 to 25 recognizes the different options that are on the table, everything from the WEC, which proposal for a multiway boulevard, down to what LTD currently has. And the 15 feet would allow for wider sidewalk, street trees, at about a six-foot planting strip and a 10-foot sidewalk. So, I feel confident that we've made that, we've done that analysis.
Okay, but-
I think we have addressed your concerns.
Okay. I, I'm going to question that some, because right now, we're trying to get a 10-foot pedestrian area for greenscape and hardscape, and in many situations, to get a dedicated transit line in that, particularly in the eastern portion of West 11th, where it's very tight, you need another 10 feet minimum for a, for a, the bus lane, or a rapid, you know, that you can have actually as dedicated or shared lane, where the bus lane is only used for right in, right out, and that kind of stuff. So, I think the minimum is probably closer to 20 to 25 feet in a lot of that corridor.
The area you're referencing is all Zone C-2, and that area has a very constrained right-of-way. You're right, it's 60 to 80 feet. The area that we're, we can control right now in E-2, further west on that corridor, has a much wider right-of-way of 80 to 100 feet in some places. So, if we could change the C-2 standards right now, that'd be great.
That's fine, let's do that.
But I think that we've, we've gotten there on the E-2.
Commissioner Belcher, then Commissioner Borowski.
Well, my concerns are along the lines of Commissioner Duncan raised. I'm glad to see that you've changed these, but I do recall when MX was being discussed with LTD, someone asked the question of whether or not what they're proposing would prevent a multiway boulevard on West 11th, and LTD's response was, no, it wouldn't. Perhaps this says, yes, it would. And I guess it would take me to, I'm glad to hear you're coordinating better with LTD, but I think in general, we need to do a better job of coordinating our transit planning with our land use plan.
Commissioner Borowski.
Along those same lines, I heard Commissioner Duncan had to say, however, the, the idea of allowing parking in that area, you know, for the further, if you, if you push the setback back, I said, okay, in the meantime, you can put parking there. I don't think that's a good idea, because then you get into the same problem down the road. You're taking my parking from my business. I can't, I can't be successful anymore. That's what happened on multiway boulevard on, on Franklin, you know. It, it would make sense to take Hyren's parking, but he's not going to get, then where are you going to give his parking? So, if you want bigger setbacks, I'm, I'm in favor of that for expanded right-of-way down the road. But saying that you can use that for parking and building a new development, I think is a, is a, is a slippery slope, because then, when you do acquire that right-of-way, then you're going to have the, don't take my parking.
Commissioner Duncan.
Well, my point would have been, and maybe it's not, I'm going to go check all my LTD stuff, because I'm in the midst of all that as it is, is that that parking would be allowed, but would not be counted as part of your code parking requirements. I understand what you're saying, because there's market, there's market conditions that you actually use when you take parking versus code requirements. But what I was trying to get is a way to get, to allow people to feel that they've got something versus just having a sea of space out in front of their property that, in most people's mind, is sort of non-productive land. So, sort of that washout. But if you're convinced that it's all there, I'm going-
That section is tricky, west of Bailey Hill.
Yeah, I know it is.
And Route F starts. You'll notice in the I-1s, we tried, we attempted to regulate it a little differently along that double right-of-way.
Right.
Route F, so we wouldn't get that extra space in front of the building.
I'd be a little careful about phrasing it that way, because the right-of-way actually extends quite a ways further to the east than what Route, that Route F area shows on the map. It actually extends down to, there's a chapel in there or something, I think that's about where it starts. So, it's quite a ways east of that Route F location. But I, mine is the first couple of three properties in there that's currently scheduled for the new Walgreens, if, if the zone change occurs and everything else, because I know that we've struggled with what's across the street from there, and having to move right-of-way in narrow lanes and do all kinds of tricky things to make it work.
Indeed. And that's the one we used as a test case in coming up with the 15, was the property where United Rentals is.
Yeah, but it's also across the street, because the pedestrian corridor across the way is quite narrow. And so, it's the idea of not just recognizing expansion on one side, but you've got to be able to get the whole width both ways. And maybe it doesn't work that way in this. But thank you for looking at it.
So, Commissioner Baker.
Yeah, I was, both Commissioner Duncan and I were looking at this map. The one thing I noted here is, when you're directly west of Bailey Hill, you've got one side of the street that's commercial, it's got the limitation on it, and the other side that doesn't, before you be, before you get to the, where there's the-
The channel, Amazone Channel?
Yeah, yeah. So, it seems to me there's a, an area there where the, you might have right-of-way issues that, that you're not dealing with, with our code change.
Right.
You know, because the commercial's across the street, and you can't expand there. So, the only place, as Commissioner Duncan said, the only place you could potentially expand is this, this industrial area across the street. So, again, if you, if you set these criteria too low, then you've, it doesn't matter that half a mile down the road is fine. If you can't fix it there, it doesn't make any sense that you're going to be able to fix it farther on. If you follow what I'm saying, you create a choke point, you create a choke point, and then there's no longer, you know, a dedicated lane or whatever. So, I, I would be a little concerned about making certain that you checked thoroughly that area where it's across from commercial, that we've allowed for more than adequate expansion.
Can you hear the name of the engineer for Parsons Pinkerhoff, if you want to talk to them? If you talk to Chris.
Okay, guys, we are pretty much getting close to being out of time. I personally cannot go later today, I have a meeting that I need to get to. And so, I'm just wondering, staff, how should we proceed at this point? Because we're not going to get through all of this.
Right. Well-
I'm done.
What about tomorrow night after the meeting tomorrow?
Well, I, we've kind of got you booked out through this week, I think.
Yeah, this week's-
Well, I was thinking after, if tomorrow night goes quick.
Can we deliberate without public notice, though?
Yeah, I think we could. I, but, you know, in looking at the council calendar and looking at your calendar, I haven't checked with Terry and Zach yet, but it looks like January 6th is an open date for you all right now, and that is still prior to a scheduled city council work session, so-
So, there would be time to-
I haven't had a chance to verify that, but I'm thinking that we could, we have, unfortunately, we have a pretty full schedule leading up to Christmas and-
And this week, this week especially is full.
This week is especially full. And so, without scheduling you on either December 23rd or the 30th, we could, I think we still have time, January 6th.
Let's please not do the 23rd or 30th. Commissioner Duncan.
Well, I'm, I'm curious, for tomorrow night's deliberation, since it's a joint meeting, and really, they're only involved in two parcels, and we- And we might be able to get through that at a reasonably fast pace. Are we planning to continue deliberation on the remainder?
That's not how we set up the information.
We were thinking just the two tomorrow night.
And based on past experience with those joint deliberations, they can take a while. And there's certainly issues to be discussed there.
You're more optimistic than we are on the timing. I think we'll probably use the full time on those two items.
That'd be my guess, too.
So, so not to just let the front yards, are we at a point to where are we comfortable, at least on the E2 part of the front yard setbacks, of giving a thumbs up or a thumbs down on staff recommendations?
I do want to add that we absolutely will continue to coordinate and gain more information and insight on those right of way issues because they're very tricky. This is, with what we know now, our best recommendation, but it's possible it could need a little more.
And I'm thinking just the E2, not the E1, on the front yard setbacks for this particular thumbs up, thumbs down.
Yeah. I'm happy with the setbacks, given what staff has said. That won't stop me from doing a little of my own math just to get back.
That's fine.
But I'm happy with the response for E2.
So, for E2 front yard setbacks, as staff recommended with the, it's easier to read it in the chart here, wherever that is.
Page 18.
Page 18, with, if it's on an arterial street, the minimum is 15 feet and the maximum is 25 feet. If it's on all other streets, the minimum is five feet and the maximum is 15 feet. And that's just in the E2 zone. So, thumbs up, thumbs down? Okay? I think that's unanimous. Okay. So, we're gonna, we're gonna stop there because we have a couple of items from commission and I want to also have, unless you think we can get the E1 in this, too. We've got seven minutes. No?
I'm looking at John, I don't know.
John's recommendation.
Let's come back to it. Let's come back to it.
We'll come back to it.
Okay. I don't want to rush a decision.
I was gonna vote, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
So, other items from staff? Done? We have a couple from commission. One is Commissioner Belcher's request for advice for Thursday night. And then we also have one, I think, from Commissioner Duncan related to the weather on Thursday night and the weather forecast as far as a contingency plan. So, let's start with Commissioner Belcher.
Okay, this is in regards to the Oakley Meadows Cohousing Appeal, PD T 13001. I am co-chair of the River Road Community Organization. I have had extensive involvement with both proponents and the opponents, such that it would be, first of all, very difficult for me to share with you everything I have learned by ex-party contact, including having visited the site. Additionally, our neighborhood association in a meeting that I chaired took an almost unanimous vote to allow the neighborhood to be an appellant should either side appeal, and therefore, I have signed that document. So, whether or not I could be unbiased, it certainly would raise the question. So, therefore, and frankly, having learned as much as I am, it would be difficult for me not to have already predetermined the position that I would take. So, given all that, I am asking your advice as to whether I should recuse myself.
Commissioner Duncan?
I move that we allow Commissioner Belcher to recuse himself from-
You can't allow me, but you can advise me.
Oh.
According to the code.
Yeah.
Okay. I move we advise him to recuse himself from-
In the most strong terms.
This hearing.
Okay. Is there a second? Second, Commissioner Jaworski, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Have we done this before? Have we done this kind of move to advise someone to recuse? Because I've never been at the table when we've done that.
I think I recused myself one time, but I don't know that we went through the same formality. I think I just said I'm, I had a financial interest.
I did also.
Well, you have a financial interest, that's clear.
I did also, and I did that, and I didn't know I had to seek advice. If I was concrete in my thoughts that I should, I just did.
He just didn't show up.
I think technically, Commissioner Mills, I think technically, this is the way we're supposed to do it.
I've had that happen before. I'm the one that brought it up.
Yeah. Okay. So, all those in favor of advising Commissioner Belcher to recuse himself, raise your hand. Commissioner Belcher, you are advised to recuse yourself Thursday night.
I will be recusing myself Thursday night, thank you.
He just didn't want to read the pack.
Already have, over and over.
More than you have at this point. Okay, then the second item, I think Commissioner Duncan brought up before our meeting with the weather forecast coming up the latter part of this week and the chance of ice, freezing rain, that sort of thing, how we might want to deal with that for a public hearing where there's likely to be a lot of people that would want to testify if the weather is such that maybe they could not get there. Is that an issue for public process?
Well, this is, the clock is ticking on us on this one with the 120-day sneaking up quickly here, so-
And I don't think the suggestion was to cancel it. I think the suggestion was if the weather becomes inclement and there are people who are not able to come, are there options?
Okay. I'll need to check with staff about that. I'm presuming that we left enough room in the way that we did the schedule to allow for leaving the record open for seven days, but I'll need to double-check that. And so, I'll check in with Steve Nystrom on the timing of that.
Is there a chance we could ask, is it the appellant? Well, it has to actually be both sides, doesn't it, that agree to an extension of time?
Uh, just the applicant.
Just the applicant?
Yes.
Because the weather forecast is for a high of like 32 or 33 after we had several days of rain with weather being probably in the teens by the time the thing starts or typically, and it just seems like a dangerous situation to be asking staff, planning commissioners, people to come out. And I'd hate to have it, have us not get the testimony that would be appropriate because of weather because we'll be, there'll be a suggestion we should have thought of it ahead of time. That's why I'm trying to think about it ahead of time because if we are gonna cancel, then I believe we have to do that by tomorrow.
Okay. So, we'll look at a couple of different contingency plans.
Okay. That's all we can ask.
And we'll let you know.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Appreciate that. So, then tomorrow night, we have deliberations jointly with the Lane County Planning Commission on Crow Road and the Eagles property. Thursday night is the public hearing for Oakley. Both, I believe, are at Harris Hall at 6 o'clock. Is that correct?
One 6 and one 7, isn't it?
Is one's-
Tomorrow night's 6.
Tomorrow night is 6. And the public hearing is at?
6.
I don't know that one, Oakley, what hearing?
I think it's-
Check your packet.
Hold on, I've got it right here.
Gotta be 6. We always do 6.
I have 6 at both, for both.
Both at 6, yeah.
6 p.m., yep.
Yeah, I'm at 6.
Okay. So, Commissioner Borowski, other items from commission?
And I brought this up to the chair earlier, but at our last, at the public hearing on the redesignation of the lands for, we were gonna leave the record open so Jefferson Westside could come up with a proposal. Haven't, I haven't seen it. Chair said he saw it.
I haven't seen it.
You haven't seen it?
No, we haven't seen that.
Didn't that go to the entire planning commission?
I thought it was emailed to the planning commission, but staff has received it.
We haven't.
And you received it?
I received a copy, yes.
He did, but we didn't, I haven't seen it.
I've got it.